Good evening, everyone. In accordance with the open public meetings law, adequate notification of this meeting has been provided by advertising in the record, posting notice in the Board of Education Administration Building, and filing notice with the city clerk. We call the meeting to, regular meeting to order on Monday, November 15th at 6:18 PM. I'll do a roll call. Mr. Bendezu? Mr. Coleman is unable to make it this evening. Mr. Nully?
Here.
Mr. Goodman?
Here.
Ms. Lassane?
Here.
Mr. Oats?
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez is unable to make it this evening. Mr. Velez? Mr. James Vickery?
Here.
Mr. Powell?
Here.
A quorum is present. Please rise for a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. This evening, the board will go into closed session to discuss legal matters, personnel, student-related matters, negotiations, and matters confidential by law. Is there motion to that effect?
I move second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. If the public will excuse us, we'll be back at approximately 7:30. Good evening, everyone. It's eight o'clock, and we'll be calling a meeting to order. On the roll call, Mr. Coleman, Mr. Rodriguez, and Mr. Velez are unable to make it this evening. Ms. Nully?
Here.
Mr. Goodman?
Here.
Ms. Lassane? Mr. Oats?
Here.
Mr. James Vickery?
Here.
Mr. Powell?
Here.
A quorum is present. There are no presentations this evening, however, we would like to recognize the candidates who ran for the Board of Education that are here this evening, and that includes Mr. Lancelot Powell. Ms. Marlene Somerville?
Marlene.
She knows I'm happy to see her because we bonded last time. Ms. Jennifer Maury? And I don't see Mr. Demetrius Carroll, but we welcome him also. We will be swearing in these individuals at the January, annual organization meeting on January 3rd. Congratulations. There are no presentations this evening. Our student rep is not here this evening. So we go right into the superintendent's report.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Congratulations to our new trustees. Look forward to working with you. I hope everyone is doing well. Tonight, I'm pleased to announce to everyone that in conjunction with the City of Hackensack Health Department, we are offering COVID-19 vaccine clinics on November 23rd at Jackson Avenue School, and on November 30th at that Fairmont School for our students ages five and up, whose parents wish for them to be vaccinated. These locations were chosen to accommodate our families with a venue that is close to their home, as the select locations are on the opposite sides of the city. These vaccine clinics bring us one step closer to putting this pandemic behind us at once and for all. Please check our email or our district website for additional information. This week also marks the beginning of our parent teacher conferences at the elementary school. This year, our parents have the choice of an in-person or virtual meeting to help accommodate our parents' needs. Parent teacher conferences provide our parents with a great opportunity to learn about their children's academic progress and provide our parents with an opportunity to share information with their children's teachers regarding their children's strengths and needs to maximize their potential for success. We anticipate that these conferences will be productive and collaborative. Also, tomorrow evening, the Hackensack Public Schools Community Engagement Committee is hosting its first virtual community meet and greet networking event for community leaders. The mission of the Community Engagement Committee is to foster a welcoming environment that creates and maintains strong partnerships between the school district and the community, where everyone has a voice to promote student success, achievement, and wellness. We look forward to our first meeting, which we hope will be the first of many. Moving on, our middle school intramural program is literally up and running. The school's first cross-country meet is scheduled for Tuesday, November 23rd at 4:00 PM by the Hackensack High School track. As a former cross-country coach, I for one can't wait to see our kids in action. A quick update on our construction projects. The work is coming along nicely and beautifully, but of course, there have been some hiccups. With that said, you know, working with our contractors, the bathroom works at both Fairmont and Jackson Avenue School have been moved to second shift. Hopefully, at the next board meeting, we might be able to show some pictures of the progress that's been happening. Next up, I would like to ask our board attorney, Mr. Taylor, to provide you all with an update with regards to the ongoing contract negotiations with our various unions.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Sanchez. As the board and many members of the community are aware, if and when a contract between a school district and a collective bargaining unit, a union expires, the employees are still protected and covered by the terms and conditions of the expired contract, and the board and the administration are obligated by law to comply with the terms of that contract. Notwithstanding the same, we are scheduled for a follow-up mediation with the Association of Office Professionals. We have a mediation scheduled for this Thursday, November 18th at 5:00 PM, and we have a follow-up mediation with the Hackensack Education Association, more commonly known as the Teachers Union, on Monday, November 22nd at 5:30 PM. It's the board's intent, as it always has been, to negotiate in good faith with its employees with the goal of reaching an amicable agreement. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Moving on, the ongoing nationwide teacher, substitute teacher, and paraprofessional shortage continues to be an issue for many districts throughout the country. We are no stranger to this issue. To that end, we are continually looking forward to creative ways to recruit new staff by speaking with local colleges and universities, and by starting an employee referral program with our substitute teacher provider. Recently, we increased the rate of pay for our in-district substitutes, and on tonight's agenda, we have a resolution that proposes an increase in the rate of pay for our part-time paraprofessionals. It is our hope that these measures will begin to alleviate some of the staffing shortages. Finally, our annual Thanksgiving Day Parade and football game versus Teneck High School is back. The game starts at 10:30 AM on Thanksgiving Day at our home field. Please come out and support our comments. Now on to the enrollment report. Our current enrollment is 5,397 students, and we had a total of 21 HIB investigations completed this month. That concludes my report. I wish you all a great rest of the week and a happy Thanksgiving.
Dorie. Mr. Carroll is here. Okay.
And we will add our congratulations to Mr. Demetrius Carroll, who's walking in. I believe it's time for public comments. Oh, I'm sorry. Student report.
Pleasure to be here tonight. Student Council President Victor May. Here's our November student board report. So for Veterans Day this year, sophomore Sam Yun, under the direction of Lisa McVicker, performed the Star Spangled Banner and Tabs at the city's Veteran Day Ceremony. Additionally, the high school veterans' website creator, Bob Belly, was recognized during the ceremony. The website has been acknowledged all over the world and continues to be a conversation among alumni. The high school student council will be hosting another spirit week on the week of November 22nd. Additionally, the French Honor Society is hosting a food drive to support our local food pantries. Hackensack will be hosting our annual Thanksgiving Day game this year against Teneck. Like you said, it was, you know, 10:30 start, and we will have the band parade from the middle school to high school at 9:30 AM. We will be honoring our senior band members, cheerleaders, color guard, and full players before the game. And the last thing is, the high school will be hosting parent teacher conferences during the week of December 1st and 2nd between 6:30 and 8:30 PM. Parents will have the option of either attending virtually or in person. Thank you.
So just a quick update on the work that's happening at the schools. Of course, we understand the pain that, you know, we're going through with all of this construction, and people question, you know, why is the work happening now? Why couldn't we wait? You know, unfortunately, as we mentioned in previous board meetings, we know that, you know, we went out to bid at the appropriate times. Again, nobody wants to hear this, but it's the truth. Due to the pandemic, things were delayed all across the board, even from the DOE approvals on our projects. Of course, these projects, once they were approved, you know, bids were offered and bids had to happen. You know, the way school budgets work, work that's awarded in one school year has to get completed in that school year, so we are dealing with some bumps and bruises with these construction projects, but at the end of the day, we will all be better for it, much like the roads that are being paved throughout the city. You know, again, while they're paving the road, that two or three days that we're dealing with all the traffic, of course, it's no fun, but once it's done, you know, get out your roller blades because it's smooth sailing, so just bear with us as we get through these projects. Thank you.
Good evening. Please, it's now time for public comments. Please approach the microphone, state your name, and you have a three-minute limit.
Oi, God. Sorry. Beetlehead story. I wasn't going to say anything, but thank you for holding this here. All of these only have the odd pages, no even pages. It's one, three, five, nine.
We're going to give you one. We recirculated them.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for being here.
Yeah, he's going to bring it.
Good evening, Reverend Carolyn Davis. I just have a question. I understand during, because of the pandemic, there've been a lot of delays as far as getting supplies and so forth and so on. I had to wait seven weeks to get parts for my washing machine, so I understand that. But my question is, with our elevator being out, what accommodations are being made for students now? If you have a student that has crutches, is another student assigned to them? What accommodations are being made, even a teacher, since the elevators are not working to help them in that? Because it's a health risk and possible liability for the school. So I just wanted to know what combinations have been made for those students or teachers who would normally take the elevator?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi. Patricia Burleson. I'm an HEA rep from Fairmont School, and I'm here tonight to speak for our members and our students. As a rep, I'm not here to attack or to preach, but I am tasked to represent Fairmont, and we need to be heard. I would like to revisit the sharing of assistant principals in the elementary schools. We were told that we don't have to have full-time assistants, as in many schools in Bergen County share assistant principals. Why would you compare us to other schools? Why would you want to? We are unique in Hackensack. Do we really compare in those other schools as far as numbers, demographics, special needs, ESL? Someone at the last meeting said it right. Do the math. When you subtract, you get less. The week of Halloween, Fairmont again had no administrator. Three days. Wednesday and Thursday, we had a social worker and a counselor in the building, but those are not administrators, and I'm not surprised you aren't concerned about liabilities. What if something happened? On Friday for Halloween, we were down to our secretary as the first-in-command. She is amazing, but she's not an administrator, but she's expected to do the work of one. Because we had no administrator, when the weather cleared, we had no parade. We had, I don't know, 500, 600 students in costume, and I don't know if you know how amped up children in costume are, but it's a big day for them, and we had nothing. Our sister school, that had both a principal and an assistant principal, had a parade, but our children got nothing. You say there is a schedule, and the assistant can't cover where she's needed, but how can you have two admins in one building and none in the other for days? People have been told that there's a plan or a protocol in place. The plan is to leave this incredible responsibility to people who are not administrators. They're not qualified, and they are not paid to do the job of administrator. I've been at Fairmont for 20 years, and we've always, always had an assistant principal. But now, when we need the help the most, when there's so much talk about social and emotional well-being, in a year where students and maybe even staff have suffered loss and trauma, why would we have less when we need more? This is about the children. Please listen to those who care for them every day. I'm telling you that we feel abandoned. I'm telling you that we don't feel supported. When one board member ended last week saying, expressing that he felt yucky, we're feeling that all the time, when we're asked to do more with less, time after time. When you do with less, and you do with less, you're just left with less. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Tracy Fundisek. I'm a resident, I'm a teacher, I'm a parent, I'm an alumni. I just wanted to come up. I know it's been brought up at most of the meetings since we've returned to in-person after the pandemic, but I'd like to ask again for meetings to be held in some type of virtual forum for people who cannot come here in person, especially with bad weather coming, people with small children at home, can't come out at night. I put out a petition, just on a Google form, something simple, to see if I'm not the only one who feels this way, and maybe the 10 other people who have spoken at board meetings. And in the last two weeks, we've gotten 128 responses of people who want the board meetings some way virtual, with or without the comments, but most people are requesting in-person and virtual comments. I attended the last city council meeting, and they did have virtual, so you could sign in from home, but you could also make public comment from home. And the council members responded to the public's concerns right then and there. The petition was signed by, like I said, 128 people, and it is a combination of parents, staff members, community members, alumni, and employees. So if you could just please consider again hosting it in some way, a virtual forum, whether it be Zoom or a webinar, and possibly even allowing public comment, I think you'll get a lot more community feedback and get a feel for what the community, the parents, the staff, the students need by including a whole extra group of people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Antoinette Walker, Hillers School. I'm also a union rep. Okay, can you hear me? Okay. Antoinette Walker, Hazel, Hackensack, also a teacher at Hillers and a union rep for Hillers. I just would like to bring to your attention at Hillers School, which our administrators are aware of, today, the building was freezing. They kept saying that the heating company was coming to fix, but as you know, the weather is going tremendously down. Tomorrow is going to be very cold. If your child was coming home and said, you know, most of you are parents, and you say, "How was your day?" "I wore my coat all day." We wore our coats all day long today. I went to my administrator, she was aware of it. She even informed our head custodian. She also informed Mr. Sanchez. But we're just asking, these children should not be in the building when it's 30 degrees. Hands are freezing, and how can you teach with a big coat on? You know, it's very unprofessional. Also, I'm coming to your attention, as we understand about the shortage. I know you're working on it. I'm a resource room teacher, and as an administrator, she knows. I've been pulled 12 times since school started. Do you think I'm meeting my children's IEPs? And this is parent teacher conference week? No. So how do you think these parents are going to feel? You have people coming into the district that want to apply and to be a comment and be a teacher, but you don't even want to pay them the amount that they deserve. So please, we're just asking, just help us out a little bit, to just take the stress off of us, and take the stress off of administrators a little bit, so we're not worn down. We feel like it's June already, and it's just November. Thank you.
Donna West, HEA president, teacher at Parker and Hackensack resident. And I actually have something positive to say tonight, everybody. I know, Mr. Vickery. We're there, we're there. I want to actually thank this board and central office for getting the nurses some help. But on a long list of things that you need to get done for us, I'd like to say that that's the only thing. I mean, I'd like to say that we have more than that, but we are excited and happy that you have resolved that issue and that it's in the process. I think what bothers me the most is, and part of this is hearsay, but I do speak with the part-time paraprofessionals as well, and they left Thursday's meeting very disheartened. I spoke to one last night who is leaving the district. Another one is leaving at the end of the month, and I don't know what it is that we keep doing that we have to pretty much insult these people for the work that they do. And I know they're not a part of our bargaining unit, so I'm a little disappointed that the union's name was thrown around in that meeting. We had no representation there, nor were we supposed to be there because they're not a part of our bargaining unit. That was not fair, and that was upsetting, to hear that. The other thing, I'm glad to hear, that construction is moving to second shifts, but this is, at Jackson, at least, the second time that we have brought to your attention the horrible and dangerous conditions that the construction was causing the students and staff. So much so that we have a video that I have not shared, but I'm sure you've been made aware of it. You have to do better, you have to do your homework. There is no reason why construction needs to be going on during the day when we are trying to give these kids the best. Please don't tell me about COVID and slowdowns and all that stuff. Figure out a way to get it done. It cannot be done during the day. It really impacts the children's learning environment. But again, I do want to thank you for the work. I want to publicly thank Darius Pemberton and Lauren Kazmark. They met with the HEA Executive Committee the other week, and it was one of the more positive meetings that we've had in a long time, and I hope that that is the path that we are going to be on when we can have civil conversations like that. Thank you so much.
Evening. Tom Trizano, Hackensack High School. How are you guys doing tonight? I have a list of 30 things, but I'm only going to get to four. I think that's the appropriate amount of time we have. First one is concerns about air exchange. That's still an issue. It was brought up back in August and last year, and it's still an issue in many of our classrooms. And that goes along with the temperature control and electrical upgrades that were promised and things along those lines. But it still is something that, you know, obviously is very much an important part of stabilizing our classroom environments so that kids can learn and we don't have interruptions. The second thing I was going to mention was, we're anticipating a fourth wave of COVID. There'll be an additional surge as people come indoors. The health concern there for us, I guess, would be to revisit our reopening plan, which was something that was presented back in August, and then there was 60 days that elapsed, and we want to make sure that we're current with that, looking at the plan, making sure that it's feasible, and making sure it makes sense for all of the new things that have come down the line with regards to the science, the CDC, and whatnot. Third thing that came to a very strong level of importance was the amount of security of our buildings during the voting last Tuesday. Apparently, there were a lot of adults wandering around in the building, not using the proper entrances, but that means that the doors, the exterior doors, were propped or held open by people somehow or another. A lot of the concern came with the strange members of our community working as contractors inside of the schools, and apparently, the contractors were holding doors for people, which they should not be doing, and propping doors. Sometimes they prop doors with just whatever tools relying about. Sometimes those tools look like scimitars, believe it or not. I mean, it's some pretty strange images that have been circulating, that I've been apprised of, which in general means that our buildings aren't as secure as they ought to be. There has to be some sort of protocol for swiping in, swiping out, and perhaps some vetting with regards to the contractors who are coming onto premises to make sure that they are not only, you know, announcing themselves when they are entering our workspaces, but also announcing themselves when they exit. I mean, as absurd as it may sound, it could be that a contractor has a vendetta against a particular teacher and hides in a closet, you know? Nobody's checking on that. I know that's like, you know, an incredibly paranoid viewpoint for most people, common sense-wise, but it's something that in this day and age is feasible, and if I can imagine it, and I'm a relatively good person, I think, and not a paranoid person, somebody who's got an insidious imagination is very likely to have that floating in their imaginations as well. So it's best to be proactive and preventative, so we don't end up having an encumbrance of, at the very least, a legality issue. Okay? Thank you so much.
There being no further comments, the public session comments are closed.
Thank you for your comments. We're closing. Dorie. Dorie, it's closed. We're moving to our resolutions, and we'll start with personnel.
Minutes. Minutes of the October 18th meeting.
We reserve the Hackensack Board of Education approves the regular meeting minutes and closed session minutes of October 18, 2021. A submissal.
Is there a mover?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Goodman?
I'll second.
Mr. Oats? On the roll call, Mr. Nully?
Yeah.
Mr. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Lassane?
Yes.
Mr. Oats?
Yes.
Mr. James Vickery?
Yes.
Mr. Powell? So Mr. Powell's abstaining, correct? Motion carries.
Personnel, thank you. Personnel met this past Monday, as per usual, and I'm sorry, thank you. And I'm a person who cannot hear, so I appreciate that. So I present to the board Actions A, 1, A through T. Can I get a motion?
A motion.
Motion.
Ms. Lassane? A second. Mr. Powell?
Moved by Mr. James Vickery, seconded by Mr. Powell. On the motion, Mr. Nully?
Yeah.
Mr. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Lassane?
Yes.
Mr. Oats?
Yes.
Mr. James Vickery?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Personnel section carries.
Before we move on, I'd like to introduce our two new administrators. Mr. Eric Bultang, new principal of Fairmont School. Would you like to introduce yourself to the public, please?
Good evening, Superintendent Sanchez, board members, parents, teachers, students, Hackensack Education Association, every stakeholder. My name is Eric Watan, and I come to Hackensack Public Schools with over 20 years of educational experience, ranging from pre-K to 12. I'm a product of two African parents who immigrated to the United States in the early 70s. seventies in search of a better opportunity in life for their kid. They always taught us that education would be the passport to our future and that hard work, perseverance, academic excellence, and painted forward would be critical to achieving those endeavors. As I stand before you, as I stand before you, that dream and that endeavor has been realized. As the next principal of Fairmount Elementary School, I look forward to collaborating with each and every one of you to making Fairmount Elementary School one of the best schools in the city of Hackensack, as well as in the state of New Jersey. In the words of the late great educator, Dr. Rita Pearson, "Every kid needs a champion." And as the next principal of Fairmount Elementary School, I pledge to be a champion for our teachers, our students, and our parents. Thank you again. I'm excited by this leadership opportunity. I am humbled, and I am looking forward to working with each and every one of you. Happy holidays, happy New Year, stay safe, and I'll speak with you real soon. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Congratulations. Thank you, Principal Botang, and Amanda Grassi, our new math and business supervisor. Please come up and introduce yourself.
Thank you, Board President, Board Members, Superintendent Sanchez, and the public. I'm incredibly humbled by this opportunity to lead mathematics in this district. I've spoken to Superintendent Sanchez many times in our interview about how compelled I am by the Hackensack Public Schools' mission statement about complex problem solving and communicating effectively and having students do work that's going to change their communities and society. So I feel very humbled to be given the opportunity to steward that vision, and I'm very excited to work alongside passionate educators. So thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Good evening, everyone. Hope everybody is doing okay. I'll try to speak slower and louder, louder, more louder, sorry. For policy, we have no first reads, and there's just the two for B2. That's P-2425 and PNR 5751, the sexual harassment of students. Before I put that forward, I just want to throw something out there that the next few months, we're going to be working on, hopefully in policy, in conjunction with curriculum, and that's just the graduation requirement of community service. Right now, in all of the seniors in Hackensack High, there is no graduation requirement for community service. There is for certain honor societies and certain groups, but for every senior, there is no requirement. 2001, the state legislature tried to pass a law whether it would be 15 hours for every New Jersey high school senior. It ultimately failed in the state senate, I believe, but districts around the state have adopted it. There's very few states that have it as a state law. There are more are coming, but I think this might be something to teach the value of service, the value of community. It might be something worth looking into, and we're going to explore a little more into this, the pros and the cons. It doesn't have to be 15 hours. There's many ways to do this. I just want to know if anybody on the board has any input with this or what they think, if there's a little discussion. Is this something we could look into? Is that cool? Yeah? Okay, cool. A lot of other districts have it. They have it at 40. It's graded as per when you entered the school. If you entered as a freshman, it'd be 40. Entered as a sophomore, it'd be 30 and 20 and so on. But again, I think this is something we're going to be looking into, just to see if it's a possibility, to see if, again, move this district forward. Saturday, they had Slam Dunk the Junk, and a lot of different groups were down in the whole city. You might have seen them with the yellow t-shirts. It was amazing. I was down there with my son, who did it for the NJHS, the middle school. And it was just amazing to see all of that community. There were, everybody had smiles on their faces. A beautiful morning before the rain came, and there was different clubs throughout the city. There was fraternities and sororities, and it was a great community day, and I just couldn't help but think, like, those were for the kids that were part of a group already. What if we opened this up and put all the kids in the high school, gave them a taste of what that could be? I think it'd be a really cool lesson to teach in a way to really educate our kids, yes, but also instill in them the need for service and community service. So that's just something where, as a policy committee, we're going to be trying to push forward. So again, that's where we're going to be headed. So I put forward to the board B1. There's nothing there. B2.
Seconded by Ms. Lassane. On the roll call, Mr. Nully?
Yes.
Mr. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Lassane?
Yes.
Mr. Oats?
Yes.
Mr. James Vickery?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
The policy B2 carries.
Can I make a quick comment regarding what he just referred to?
As the conversations start, I know that I'm not in that committee, per se, but as y'all start rolling it around in the committee level, just assuring, just remembering that everyone, every student comes from a different background and has different needs, and so just, I'm just thinking, assuring that there are in-school and out-of-school opportunities for kids who may, you know, have to work on Saturdays, have to work directly after school, but that there are opportunities that they can, because I absolutely believe that we need to instill in students serving others, but just making sure that everybody has the appropriate opportunity.
Could I just ask a question? Can the audience understand what was just said? Because I couldn't. And so...
Sorry.
We're having a difficult time this evening with the acoustics and the recording, and I could barely hear what the members of the public were saying, although I got the gist. If we could just maybe repeat some of it.
Now?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, not the public.
So I was... I can't, because the attorney will get on to me. Okay, is that better? Okay, so just because I'm not in the policy committee, I wanted to just assure that as they start rolling it around and talking about it, that they are remembering that every student in our district come from different backgrounds and have different needs, and so some students that I think of may have to work to help their families directly after school or on Saturdays, and just ensuring that whatever the number of hours may be, that some of those opportunities could be provided during the school hours for them to be able to attain that whatever number of hours, too. I just wanted, because I'm not in that committee.
Thank you, Scott.
So Mr. Coleman is not here tonight, so let me present the curriculum. So a lot of it has to do with certain reimbursements, and so we're looking at C1, board, through... Good Lord. C17. Is there, because we are not on that committee, is there any questions that we might want to ask before we move forward with these? Can I have a second? Mr. Powell, thank you.
On the curriculum sections C through 17, Mr. Nully?
Yeah.
Mr. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Lassane?
Yes.
Mr. Oats?
Yes.
Mr. James Vickery?
Yes.
Mr. Powell? The motions carry.
Good evening, everyone. I will speak slowly because I, too, was having trouble understanding people. So the finance committee met last week, and it was a very brief report in terms of the number of resolutions. I would like to point out a couple of resolutions that are new tonight, that were not discussed on the previous, the previous week's meeting, but I think they're really important, because every time we receive a donation, that's noteworthy for the public. So Item D7, we are accepting a donation from Nagwa Atta of 50 turkeys at an approximate value of $25 each to be distributed at our drop-in center for families around the holidays. That's a nice touch. I like that. And Item D8, also upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the interim school business administrator, we're accepting a donation from DMR Architects. Their holiday gifts to be distributed to students at an approximate value of $20 each to be distributed to 45 needy students around the holidays. I'm not sure of the logistics, how those needy students will be selected, but that's still a donation, and it's worthy of mentioning. So on finance, I bring forth Items D1 through D8 for your consideration.
On the roll call, Mr. Nully?
Yeah.
Mr. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Lassane?
Yes.
Mr. Oats?
Yes.
Mr. James Vickery?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
The finance motions carry.
It's me again. So Buildings and Grounds, the first couple, the first one is our standard one. The second one involves, like, the PA system for the middle school, that there, we want to make sure that everybody is heard everywhere when there's an emergency, and so we want to make sure that is all working properly, and that's a resolution to get that. Some of the other things are things that we have to replace, just kind of standard. We have to have it done, you know, between board meetings, but then we need to make sure that it's noted. So E6, there is a bunch of wherayses. And so this has to do with a, first off, let me say that the board between 2007 and 2009 entered into a lease agreement. This has to, Dora, will you, can you explain this better than I, I mean, I can, but I want to make sure, E6?
Lester, this is the, Mr. Taylor, this is the one about the green space and the funds for the property on this high school athletic fields. It's an agreement for 25 years, but it's an, it already had been adopted around 2009 or 10, and then this is a reaffirmation?
Yes, so essentially, this is a, what I'll call a ratification of a prior arrangement between the city and the school district based upon certain requirements with green acres and other state oversight authorities. We needed to essentially document the transaction based upon the, quite frankly, missing documents from prior years. So this, these agreements are essentially retroactive to memorialize what has already been in effect between the parties.
So I present to the board E1 through E7 for Buildings and Grounds. Can I have a second? Mr. Nully? No, Ms. Nully.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Nully. I'm having a tough time tonight hearing. Sorry.
You're doing a great job.
Okay, on the vote for Buildings and Grounds, and then afterward, we have to go back to D9, which we overlooked. Mr. Nully?
Yeah.
Mr. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Lassane?
Yes.
Mr. Oats?
Yes.
Mr. James Vickery?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
The Buildings and Grounds motions carry.
And I apologize for not turning the page and looking at Item D9 on the finance agenda, which is basically authorizing upon the recommendation of Superintendent of Schools and the interim VA, authorizing the payment of $1.2 million to Johnson Controls. This is for the work related to ESEP, our Energy Savings Improvement Program.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Mr. Powell, seconded? On the motion for D9, Ms. Nully?
Yeah.
Mr. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Lassane?
Yes.
Mr. Oats?
Yes.
Mr. James Vickery?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
The motions carry.
We've come to the end of our resolutions. We're now moving to board comments.
Good evening. I just wanted to just thank everyone that came out tonight to our meeting. I thank you for your support. I thank you for the opportunity to serve.
Thank you, Mr. Goodman. Mr. Oats?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. Real quick, I already mentioned the Slam Dunk the Junk this past Saturday. That was a phenomenal event. Hopefully, we get a lot of those more in the future, and we'll work on that community service aspect of graduation requirement. Shout out to Mr. Botang, the new Fairmount, right? Excellent, man. Good job, man. Looking forward to working with you. Every kid needs a champion. I like that one, man. I'm going to take that one. Do you mind if I put that? I'm going to put that in the motivational rolodex. Thanks, man. Appreciate it. That's good. Also, Mrs. Grassi, thank you, or congratulations for your supervisory position. Just a couple quick shout-outs. I apologize if I'm speaking too fast. I know it's really hard to hear tonight, so I'm sorry if it must be tough down there to hear. So I'm trying to go as slow as possible. I tend to talk fast when I get excited, so I'll just kind of maintain a slow pace. Shout out to Dr. Galliana in the middle school for the first intramural track meet coming up next week, I think it is, right? November 23rd, track meet. There you go. Also, middle school volleyball, also fantastic. I think over 140, 150 girls showed up. It's amazing. It's going to be fantastic. So the heartbeat is coming back. We keep talking about that heartbeat. My daughter, Giada, is on the, doing volleyball Monday through Thursday in the afternoon, and she is, she is lit up. She loves softball. This is something new to her, something exciting, and it just, you could see that energy. You could see it. You could see that these kids have bought into what's going on over there. They're buying in. The kids, it's a different type of feel, and it's amazing, and there really should be there, something there for every student to be involved in. I guess that's a hard goal. It's a lofty goal, but eventually, if you could provide some kind of after-school activity or something, not so much a sport or some kind of, some kind of a club, something they, that they could feel a part of, I think that'd be an amazing accomplishment, and every school should be that way, but that, if we could foster that at the middle school, and just imagine what that high school will be like, and then it just keeps growing and growing and growing and growing. Thanksgiving morning, we got the football game against Teaneck. I don't know if we mentioned it last month. I think we did, but Curtis Whiting, I think Ms. Whiting is here with, yeah, record-breaking touchdown performance. I think yesterday, was it yesterday, they said something at the Jet game yesterday? Was he honored yesterday at the Jet game? Yes, yes. For salute the troops, he's going to West Point. He's going to make Hackensack proud, no doubt, no doubt. So that was a major accomplishment. They had the, the Jets coach had the Hackensack Athletic t-shirt on during the press conference. That's it. Listen, people know. If they don't know, they're going to know. They're going to know fast what's going on around here. They're going to know fast. Lot of passion in here. There's a lot of passion. We sat and met with the Paras. We're here last week. There's a lot more we could do, and I did feel yucky last week, last month. That was me that I said I felt yucky. And maybe, you know, I tend to be the optimist, and I tend to be, you know, the glass half-full guy, and I tend to be Pollyanna about the world, meaning like, you know, I just, I think everything is great, you know, sunshine and rainbows. My wife says it's Mikeyland. I'm always in Mikeyland because it's all sunshine and rainbows. There is a lot of work to do, and we do hear all your concerns and voices. We do. And we are going to get there together as a family. All right? That's all I got. Have a great Thanksgiving. Hug your loved ones. The COVID thing's still out there, so take care of yourselves. Thanksgiving morning, we'll see you. Thanksgiving morning, we'll see you out there. Go Comments.
All right, good evening, everyone, again. Thank you for coming out tonight. The acoustics have been a little bit rough, but I appreciate everyone's patience. Welcome to our new board members, and I look forward to working with all of you, and especially to Mr. Botang and Ms. Rossi. It's very, very nice that we have some great people to come into the district. I'll also just echo Mr. Oats that everyone should stay healthy and be with your families to the extent that you all feel safe and comfortable. There's definitely a challenge for the kids that are not yet able to get vaccinated. So we have to, at least in my family, we're very cognizant of the young ones and stay very careful with them. Have a wonderful holiday and stay healthy, and thanks for coming out again tonight.
So congratulations to Mr. Carroll, Ms. Maury, Ms. Somerville, and Mr. Powell. Elections can sometimes be no fun, but you made it through, and now the work gets to continue and begin. So we look forward to getting to know you and getting to work beside you as we do the work together. Reverend Davis, I love that you wear your advocate hat and your nurse's hat because you're worried about our kids and our staff with the elevator situation. I wish that we had a, an old business section that we could come back to. Because what I want to say is, I don't know the answer to that, but it's something we absolutely need to make sure is happening, that if we have to, whatever arrangements and accommodations have to be made, they need to, I'm sure they are, I just don't know the answer to that. And so if I can find it out, I will shoot you an email or do whatever I have to do. I hear your concerns, again, about the assistant principal. I never like to talk about my personal children in general from this perspective, but my children were impacted by not getting to have the parade, which is a really big deal at my house, that they did not get to have it. So I do hear that. We had, so I'm genuinely about transparency. We had a somewhat of a miscommunication. I specifically asked for us to relook at that. And just being completely transparent, Mr. Sanchez felt like the attorney made it, that it's kind of, the ball's in the other court to come back. So we need to figure out how, I don't know how this needs to happen, but it's, I make, I don't, we need to make it happen, however we have to do that. Whatever, we have to figure this out. So that conversation can happen. We, again, kind of the old business thing, I wish we could, we, I said as we were leaving executive session, we need to figure out about what, because the virtual component to the board meetings, that surfaces a good bit, and so we need to figure that out. And I will try to talk with Mr. President here and see if we can kind of land somewhere and come up with a final, what we're gonna do. Ms. West, where's my friend? Thank you for acknowledging when something does work well, but I want to acknowledge to you that I understand that the list is long and that I'm not forgetting about the list. But I do appreciate that you recognize that is the mark of a good leader, when you can recognize the good and acknowledge that even when there's still a long list of things to do. I appreciate that. And then just, I just want to make sure that everybody heard, not that you can hear me any better, but I think it's important to acknowledge that, that we hear the problems with the construction and that it has been moved to second shift, and Ms. West said that. But I just want to make sure that everybody understands that we're, we're trying to make sure that it, that it does not impact the students and staff. And then the, the last thing I want to talk about is, I think we need to look at, so I was, I vote at the middle school personally, and, and there was someone who was not happy about whatever situation was happening, and it kind of got dicey when I was there. So I do want to make sure that our schools are secure during that time of voting, because we do have a lot of folks that come into our buildings, and with construction, people, you know, they absolutely should be checking in. We should know exactly who's in the building. And quite frankly, if it's a day like that, where it's a voting day, they need to be just directly told, "Do not let any human in this building. You do not have that authority." So we need to be explicit, and especially when we have, you know, days like that. But thank you for bringing, bringing that. And I'm just thankful to be here. Look forward to Thanksgiving. Some of you know my baby's coming home from college, so I'm really excited. So go Comments.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out to our board meeting. We enjoy having you here, and we listen to your comments, and we take your comments very seriously, as always. Sometimes we may have an answer tonight, and when we don't, we can't afford to give you the wrong answers. So what we do, we make notes, as we always do, and we go back, and we try to find a solution, and then we get back to you. So, you know, try to be patient with us, please. The Thanksgiving game, please come out and support our football team. Go Comments. I think the game is a home game. And come out in your numbers, and then go home and eat your turkey. So come out and cheer our kids on. You know, a lot of them are seniors, and that could be their last game, so come out and cheer them on, please. They really need it. The ongoing construction at Jackson and the other schools, I hear your concerns, and I empathize, I understand. I went with Dora, the BA, to Jackson to look. When we get a complaint, I like to look so I can speak to it. We, we had a massive cleaning that took place, you know, tried to clean up the building, they did a pretty good job. However, I still share your concerns with the ongoing work during school time. However, what Mr. Sanchez said about the contracts being late are real for all schools. It's real. It's not a made-up story. Now, I took photos, and Dora did also, of the bathrooms, and let me tell you, they're beautiful. And in the end, when it's all completed, our kids will be happy. And I encourage you all to go look at those bathrooms when they're completed, like the floor, the sinks, the toilets. If, we also took photos of the old pipes. They were busted, and they were rusted. I have photos in my phone. And when you look at these bathrooms, they're beautiful. So just, let's work together and get these bathrooms done for our kids. It was a long time coming, and the kids really needed it. So, but we, like Scott said, we moved most of the work to the second shift, so we can still get it done. But in the end, the bathrooms were worth doing, and we're happy that we're actually getting them done. Reverend Davis, the elevator is an issue. Thank you. We're looking to it, and we'll try our best to accommodate those students and try to resolve the issues, but thank you. It's an issue. Intramural middle school, we're very excited. Mike, you could tell you're thrilled about it. I am too. And volleyball, track, I ran track, and, when I was younger, of course. And now I, so I'm looking forward. I don't miss track meets. I usually go to watch the kids run because it's in my blood, and I will go to this track meet to see our kids perform. Come out and support them, please. They do need our support. So, like I said, whatever you share with us, we're very mindful of it. The election is over. It was exciting. And I want to congratulate again our three members that are here tonight. Ms. Maury, roll up your sleeves. Ms. Somerville, roll up those sleeves. And Mr. Carroll, we're ready. Roll it up, and we welcome you with open hearts. Come on in and work with us, and like I said, the election is over. Different people running different agendas, but now that it's over, let's work together, and let's do it for our kids. We welcome your opinions, your vision, whatever you have, your objectives, bring it. We'll all work together, and I'm sure it's one Hackensack, one community, one district, and we'll get it done. And the middle school is getting a new PA system, correct? Right? So, long time coming. So it's a new PA system. Yeah, go middle school. So it, you know, we, we heard about it, we looked at it, we said, "Purchase one." And the company that we're purchasing it from, they're installing it, correct? They're installing the company that we're purchasing it from, right? Yeah, right, just to make sure it's done correctly. So it's, it's coming on board pretty soon. And with that, Thanksgiving is around the corner. I'll close by saying, this is a time for sharing and caring. And if you could offer a dinner to one family or one person, please do. Post-COVID is a difficult time for everyone. And this is a time where we can all come together as family and enjoy a meal together, a meaningful meal, and we can sit back and look back at what we've been through and, and feel grateful and thankful that we're still here, and he has kept us here for a reason. And for the people that have gone on before, let's remember them at Thanksgiving and beyond that they won't be here to share with us. I get a little emotional talking about this because, you know, I was entrenched with the whole COVID issue. But COVID is still around. COVID is still real. And as we transition into a new life, let's remember it's real where you mask, you social distance where you can, and vaccinations are available. I'm not gonna sit here and tell you. I encourage it. That's not my place. But it's there. Think about it. It's... And make a decision on what you should do for yourself and your family. But COVID is real, and as we go through this holiday, let's just pray together. A family that prays together stays together. We're one family. And I'm gonna tell you this, we're not divided, in spite of what people may say. We're not. We're one Hackensack. We may have different views, different vision, but in the end, we come together and make the best decision for our students, our teachers, our parents, and our stakeholders. And that's what we're here to do. And journey in mercies, get home safe, everyone, and enjoy. Happy Thanksgiving to you all and to you and your family. And like I said, this is a time to reach out to your neighbors and friends and families and anyone who needs help in this time of need. And we've come to the end of Board comments. I just want to say to my board members, it's, I enjoy working with you all, and pray for me. I pray for you all as we take this journey in representing the board of Hackensack. Okay? And at this time, I'll add some motion to adjourn.
I move.
All in favor?
Please get home safe, and once again, thank you for coming out to our board meeting. Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.
So have a good night, through your holiday season and everything.